Come to order. We have some announcements later, but I'm going to go ahead and start with our administrative items first. But I will say that this is the Planning Board's 32nd virtual meeting since March, and it's our final hearing for 2020. You don't have to get so excited here. So, I'm pleased to have everyone. I just wanted to make sure that everyone can see that we have our full complement of our planning board. So, Madam Vice Chair?
Good morning, here.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
Present.
Commissioner Dornar?
Hello, it is.
And Commissioner Santa Geraldo over there. Present. Present. Okay, so we have 10:30 development review items, so I want to get through these first. First, we have the draft minutes of the December 3rd and December 10th, 2020 meetings. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Madam Vice Chair, seconded by, I guess, was it Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
And Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Okay. I would note for the record that the ayes have at 5-0. I would note for the record that Item 3C has been removed from the agenda. We are now going to go into closed session for Item 3B-1. So pursuant to Section 3-305b 3 and B 7 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, we need a motion to go into closed session for consideration of the acquisition of real property and matters directly related thereto. Is there a motion?
The move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay. We have a lot of seconds. We have a motion by Madam Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Dornar. And Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it 5-0. And then we will resume shortly after this for Items 3D, and then we will start with our development review items. Thank you. Okay. We need a motion to come out of closed session.
So move, Madam Chair.
No move.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Bailey and seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. We're going to turn that into a second, Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I vote aye.
The ayes have it 5-0. The next item on our agenda is Item 3D, which is Department of Parks and Recreation, Riverview Park Vista Storm Drain Asemen. I did that. Turn me up. I said I need a motion to modify the actions taken in closed session. Okay. Excuse me. Did I have a motion to modify the actions taken in closed session or no?
No ma'am, but I still move, Madam Chair.
Okay, sorry. I've been corrected.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so we had a motion from Commissioner Washington and seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. You got one in there, Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it 5-0. Thank you. Okay. Excuse me. Did I have a motion to modify the actions taken in closed session or no?
No ma'am, but I still move, Madam Chair.
Okay, sorry. I've been corrected.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so we had a motion from Commissioner Washington and seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. You got one in there, Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Proctor, for that. The next item on our agenda is Department of Parks and Recreation, Riverview Park Vista Storm Drain Asemen. And I want to remind everyone else, as scheduled, the actual development review items are not scheduled until 10:30. So just for anyone who is on for that, the agenda has noted it's on 10:30. Okay. So Parks and Recreation, is that, is you who is doing that one?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
I can't see who it is.
I guess, Mr. Sun.
Mr. Sun, yeah.
Paul Sun from Parks and Recreation.
Okay, I just didn't see you. Okay. Mr. Sun? Okay. Mr. Sun?
Hopefully you have the PowerPoint uploaded, or if that's been...
We do.
I don't know if that's on the screen.
We do have it.
Thank you.
Okay. There we go. And we all have copies, anyway. Okay, there we go.
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow Planning Board members. It's Paul Sun from the Department of Parks and Recreation. We are here today to request approval for the granting of proposed storm drain easement at our Riverview Park. Next slide, please. The park is located on Riverview Road approximately 1 half mile east-west of Fort Washington Road. This is a developed community park, which includes a ball field, playground, picnic areas, tennis courts, and a parking lot. Next slide, please. The northern portion of the property is located within the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area and above single-family residential homes on Vista Way, which also located in the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area. Next slide, please. Prince George's County Department of Environment, DOE, has implemented a capital improvement program on Vista Way to mitigate flooding issues to existing houses on Vista Way. Because this area is in the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area, Prince George's County has filed a conservation plan which details their work. CP 2004 is currently being reviewed by Development Review Division staff and subject to approval by the Planning Director. Next slide. As part of the design and construction of the new storm drain system, there's a need for permanent easement across about 4,852 square feet of park and then CPTC property. EPR staff recommends approval of this grant of easement so the capital improvement project can be implemented. There'll be no cost considerations for this proposed easement. This concludes staff's presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sun. Let's see if there are any question... Thank you, Mr. Sun. Let's see if there are any questions of you at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dornar?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, just an observation. I do know that that area does flood pretty regularly, so a storm drain is definitely needed in that area.
Wonderful, okay. Well, not wonderful that it floods, but wonderful that we can fix it. Okay. Okay, so there are no questions, is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Bailey, seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it 5-0.
Madam Chair, I was always known as a reliable backup.
Okay, there we go.
When I played ball.
Okay. So now we're going to take a brief recess because the development review items do not start until 10:30 as scheduled. So we have about a few-minute recess. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the Planning Board is back in session, and we're about to do our development review items. First, we have some announcements, and I want to make sure that... Let me do a check and to make sure that we have everyone that we need. I'm going to start with our Planning Board. We have Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
Present.
Commissioner Dornar?
Hello.
Commissioner Geraldo? All present and accounted for. All present and accounted for. In our hearing room, we have our Planning Board Administrator Jessica Jones. We also have our technical hearing writer, Marie Proctor. We have our visual media specialist, Ryan Cron. We have our senior planning technician, Kenny Flanagan, who's working the PowerPoint here. On the line, I know we have our Chief of Development Review, James Hunt, and I believe somewhere around, we have our Planning Director as well. So I'm going to go through my announcements first. This is, the Planning Board is back in session for our development review items. It is Thursday, December 17th, and in an abundance of caution resulting from the global spread of the COVID-19 virus, this is the Planning Board's 32nd virtual meeting since March. 32nd, and it is our final hearing since 2020. We have never missed a beat. During these continued challenging times, we remain committed to promoting a safe and healthy environment for our public, our applicants, our stakeholders, and our staff as we continue business operations to propel Prince George's County forward. I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone of the participation guidelines for our hearings once again. Speaker, pre-registration and pre-submission of comments and exhibits is required. All participants must register, pre-register, and all materials or exhibits, if any, must be submitted by 12 noon on the Tuesday before the Planning Board, as shown on the screen, as announced in every weekly meeting since March, as posted on our website, as clearly noted and bold read on our published weekly Planning Board agenda. It is imperative so that we all have a process, a way of reviewing and disseminating our information to our stakeholders in time, in preparation for today's hearing. Registered speakers and presenters connecting through a computer, tablet, or smartphone can join the meeting with the link provided in the email from the Planning Board office. Online-registered participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting in order to participate in the process. Of course, registered speakers may also listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line, utilizing the call-in number provided in the email. We ask that all participants mute your phones when not speaking, but please do not put your phone on hold. To eliminate audio feedback, only one connected device with sound should be in the room at the same time. And of course, the public may continue to watch Planning Board meetings streamed live, or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our web form as well as signing up to speak. We also commence our Planning Board meetings with a moment of silence for those who have passed on. And I'm going to do that now, too. For those who passed on. Bernita Kidwell, Mrs. V. She was an aide at the Prince George's Childcare at Glen Ridge Elementary School. Her husband, Todd Jackson, is an Assistant Director at the Commission's Palmer Park Community Center. We want to remember Ms. V. and hold her in our hearts. And of course, we want to acknowledge the growing number of victims of the widespread coronavirus. We now have over 17 million cases in the United States alone and over 312,000 deaths in the United States alone. We have over 241,000 confirmed cases in Maryland and over 5,000 deaths in Maryland. This is really a travesty, but thankfully, the vaccine is out, and we're having educational sessions regarding the vaccine for those who may have some fear. But it will help eliminate the problems that we now have with this widespread coronavirus. Again, these are loved ones. These are human beings. These are mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, children, you know, grandparents of people. So they're not just statistics, and we must remember that, and it's tragic, and extend our hearts to those who have suffered losses. Some of the others who have died from coronavirus are Charlie Pride, Country Music's first black star, who sold more than 25 million records and won three Grammy Awards, and he was the first black member inducted into the Country Music Hall of Fame. Carol Sutton, age 76, film, stage, and TV actress, known for her roles in Still Magnolias, A Raisin in the Sun, and In the Heat of the Night, also died of COVID. Tommy "Tiny" Lester, we want to remember him as well. Age 62, who was an actor and wrestler known for his roles in Debo's and Worldwide... What is that? WWE's No Holds Barred. And Jean Le Carr, age 89, British author who used his Cold War-era spy experiences to write novels like Tinker, Tailor, Soldier Spy, and The Spy Who Came in from the Cold. Anne Rankin, age 71, Tony Award-winning Broadway legend, actor, dancer, and choreographer known for playing Roxy Hart in 1977's Chicago. And of course, we extend our deepest sympathy to any of you who may have suffered the loss of a loved one as well. We extend our hearts and our deepest condolences to you. If we may have that moment of silence, please. Thank you. Again, it's the month of December. I wanted to say happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, and just celebrate life during this month of December. It is December 17th, which is a Christmas Carol Day. That means Christmas Carol, the story, not singing. But it is also the Wright Brothers' Day. It commemorates the first successful sustained flight in a mechanically-propelled airplane on December 17th, 1903, by the Wright Brothers, piloted by Orville Wright. In 1959, President Eisenhower declared December 17th to be Wright Brothers' Day, and it's recognized annually. December 17th, 1964, was the premiere of the third James Bond film, Goldfinger, of course, featuring Sean Connery as Bond, James Bond. But again, in 1971, Diamonds Are Forever premiered, also featuring Sean Connery as Bond, James Bond. In 1989, it was the premiere of The Simpsons. Finally, Major League Baseball stepped up to right a wrong yesterday. Major League Baseball announced that it would right a several decades-long wrong by finally and officially recognizing the Negro Leagues as an official major league. It allows the fantastic, talented Negro League players to achieve and have the same recognition that other players had in Major League Baseball. And their stats to be included in the official record book, and they are now known as major league players. They could not play in major league until the leagues were integrated, most notably with Jackie Robinson, number 42. And this is part of a year-long celebration of the Negro League's 100th anniversary. So it took many, many decades, but at least they've endeavored to right a wrong. Finally, two more things. The Department of Parks and Recreation's guide has been released virtually this year. It is fabulous. Normally, we have way more activities, but due to the COVID environment, we cannot. But there will still be many fun ways to stay active and engaged throughout the winter season. And you can visit pgparks.com to view the digital publication offering virtual, social distancing, unlimited in-person activities, and classes. Again, we want to remind everyone to go see the Festival of Lights at Watkins Park. It is phenomenal. Many new lights, over 2.5 million twinkling lights. It's just fabulous. And we ask you to bring some canned goods because we must, in this environment, we must think of those who are less fortunate than ourselves. And then finally, we may have, we have a special birthday in the house, a special birthday in the house, and we want to wish a very, very happy birthday to our own Commissioner Manny, aka Santa Geraldo. Come on, Kenny, hit it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're not finished. There's Mama and your new grandbaby.
Oh, let's see. Oh.
Your Halloween and your dunce in the corner.
Oh, baby. I see. Oh, my God.
So we know this is a special birthday. We wanted to wish you a very, very happy birthday to Commissioner Geraldo. Can we give it up for him? Woo!
Happy birthday, Daddy. Thank you, thank you, thank you. What a big surprise. Oh, wow. Thank you, thank you.
So, we are very, very pleased to...
Yeah, it's a big year.
Well, I happen to know that, but you know, I left that up to you.
I know.
Okay.
Also, this is the 7-0. And I have a great life.
Absolutely.
And I have friends and coworkers and colleagues who I think about and I admire and who are always so supportive. So thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Have a good one. And many, many more. Many, many more.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
This is true.
So enjoy your celebrations.
And as my father always used... As my... Madam Chair, I made this one. As my father always used to say on a birthday, may we repeat this next year as well.
Yes, and hopefully in person, too. Okay.
In person, yes, yeah.
I am going to proceed with our agenda now, and the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and we have draft resolutions and final plats. Is there anyone here to oppose the staff's recommendations on Items 4D through 4H, or any board member wishes to discuss? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, after consideration of the records for those Items 4D through 4H, I move adoption of the staff findings and approval of all items on the consent agenda.
Second, Commissioner Washington? We have a motion from Vice Chair Bailey, seconded by Commissioner Washington. Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Commissioner Birthday Boy, Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, there you are. Okay. And I... And you know what? Thank you. The ayes have it 5-0. I meant to mention, I mentioned all these people that we have with us, and I was remiss in not mentioning that we have our principal counsel, David Warner. So there he is. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 9, which is a zoning case, A-10055, National View. Mr. Severs? Now, it's not something we typically hear, so I guess what I need to know is, we do have a request to hear.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, it's not something we typically do. Ms. Scutter, you can now talk about the substance of the case. We have your letter. If we do decide to hear, it'll be sent in for another day. Do you need to say anything in addition to your letter?
If you would like for me to speak about the request, I'm prepared to do that. I did prepare, you know, a presentation, but if you think I might get into some of the issues that are substantive to the case, I wouldn't want to do that, so...
No. The substantive issues would be dealt with if, in fact, we hear the case. But we do have your letter outlining your request, and each of the board members has the letter. So I... Let's just say Ms. Scutter is here and present, and you do wholeheartedly support your request to hear. Is that it?
Absolutely.
Okay. So now I'm turning it over to the board to see... It's not something we normally do, though, Ms. Scutter, so you have to be prepared. Let me see if the... What's the pleasure of the board? Is there a motion to hear? Going once. Is there a motion to hear this case? Ms. Scutter? The board is not going to hear your case, but the staff report will be transmitted to the district council, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Happy holidays to you all, and it's good to see you all again.
Yes, happy holidays to you as well. Okay. The next items are Items 5 and 6, which are companion cases, Detail Site Plan 2003-6 and Departure from Design Standard 673, both for two-town center. Let me do a check and make sure we have the people that we need here. Mr. Zhang? There you are.
Present.
Mr. Horn?
I'm present, Madam Chairman.
Okay, but we don't see you, but okay. Al Arnold? I'm going to go down this list, Mr. Horn. Al Arnold? Nancy Randall?
I'm present. Al Arnold is present.
Wonderful. Nancy Randall?
Madam Chairman, Ms. Randall is at the Montgomery County Planning Board this morning.
Okay. Okay. Well, she might like it more over here, but okay. Jeffrey Harris?
Present, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Pacilla Jones? Pacillas?
Pacula. I'm present.
Okay, wonderful. Pacula, I'm going to get it right. Peter Schwartz?
We can see him, Madam Chairman.
I see him, Peter Schwartz. He has to unmute himself. He's unmuted on our end. He has to unmute his phone, too. Okay. Well, we'll come back to you. We know that you're here because we can see you. And Frances Silverholtz? We see you.
Present.
Wonderful. Courtney St. John? Courtney St. John?
Present.
Okay. And then we have two, we have several exhibits. We have applicants, Exhibit Number 1, 2, and 3, which are proposed revised conditions, and other exhibits which we'll elaborate. And then we have two letters of opposition. One is from Ms. St. John, and the other is from Ms. Holliday Johnson. So we both, we have both of those in our backup. Okay.
Friend now written in full of our close friends, comma.
Okay. Someone's having a conversation that we can all hear. There's no privacy. So Mr. Zhang, you're on.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. For the record, this is Henry Zhang with Urban Design Section. In front of you are Items 5 and 6. Actually, the following, 7 and 8, also related, those are the two resolutions.
Yes.
Assuming we're going to consolidate your records.
We're going to consolidate the record for the companion cases. We'll get to the resolutions afterwards, depending on what happens here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 5 in front of you is Detail Site Plan for 260,362 food office building and 290 space parking garage. Item 6 is the companion case, which is a departure from design standards, DDS, which will be asked for the reduction in the parking size, parking space size, from the 9.5 feet by 19 to 9 feet by 19. Next slide, please. This Detail Site Plan is also reviewed as a transit-oriented development DST. This site is in Planning Area 76A, Council District 9. Next slide, please. Specifically, the site is on the north side of the Capitol Gateway Drive in the northeast quadrant of its intersection with Britannia Way. Next slide, please. You see here, the site is in the MXT zone, which is a mixed-use transportation-oriented zone, and sandwiched an I-3 zone office building. The property is outlined in red, surrounded by I-3 zone property, and also across the street to the southeast of the side is the Branch Avenue Metro Station, also in the MXT zone. Next slide, please. This site is also within the development district overlay zone of the Southern Gray Line, and also within the military installation overlay zone, too. Next slide, please. This is the arrow photo show that the site is basically vacant now. It's outlined in red line, and the existing... This detailed site plan is also reviewed as a transit-oriented development DST. This site is in Planning Area 76A, Council District 9. Next slide, please. Specifically, the site is on the north side of the Capitol Gateway Drive in the northeast quadrant of its intersection with Britannia Way. Next slide, please. You see here, the site is in the MXT zone, which is a mixed-use transportation-oriented zone, and sandwich an I-3 zone office building. This property is outlined in red, surrounded by I-3 zone property, and also across the street to the southeast of the- of the site is the Branch Avenue Metro Station, also in the MXT zone. Next slide, please. This site is also within the development district overlay zone of the Southern Green Line, and also within the military installation overlay zone, too. Next slide, please. This is the arrow photo show that the site is basically vacant now. It's outlined in red line, and the existing office building in the middle of the site, to your lower right-hand corner of the slides, basically is the existing parking, surface parking space slot that's serving the Branch Avenue Metro Station. Next slide, please. There is no regulated environmental feature on this site. You see here on the east of the side, basically is the Wamata Green Line train tracks. Across the street of the Capitol Gateway is the Branch Avenue Metro Station. Next slide, please. This is the master plan right-of-way, which shows the frontage along the Capitol Gateway, which is a collector roadway. Next slide, please. This is a Southern Green Line sector plan. You see here, right in the middle of the bullseyes, is the Branch Avenue Metro Station. And to the- to the northeast, excuse me, to the northwest of the Metro Station is the exist- the subject site, which is in the MXT zone. And then to the further southeast of the site, there is another MXT zone, which is the CEI, that's the location of the current USCIS building, which is under construction. This side, majority of the side is within a quarter-mile radius of the Metro Station. Next slide, please. This is a two-town center at Camp Spring. You may know from the staff report that this town center at Camp Spring is a mixed-use town center, consisting of different uses, including commercial, retails, office, and residential uses. And to the northwest of the side is the CIS2, which is the subject site. To the lower right-hand, there is the CIS1. That's the, basically, the main reason for this detailed site plan. And this is the last phase of this mixed-use town center. The current CIS1 is the federal office building, which is a citizen and immigration service, which is currently under construction. According to the Southern Green Line, there is a public building and public use provision, which qualifies the subject site from exemption of all the development district overlay zone. There is a detailed discussion on staff report under finding number 7. This site, basically, is solely for the CIS program, and it will be under the same uniform development plan of the Camp Spring mixed-use town center. Next slide, please. This is the bird's eye view of the site. In a very close-up view, you will see the property is outlined in red. To the left is the Green Line Metro Tracks, and then across the street, basically, are all the existing office building in the I-3 zone. Next slide, please. This site is basically fronting both the Capitol Gateway, you see here on the left-hand side, and then there are two buildings proposed in this detailed site plan. This larger building is the main office building, with a main entrance fronting Capitol Gateway Drive, with a pedestrian plaza, which is further connected to the sidewalks, which, you know, link to the core areas of the Branch Avenue Metro. Behind this building is the proposed 290-space parking garage, and then the vehicular access to the side will be provided well Britannian way. And there are certain, about 35 surface parking, which is between the garage and the proposed office building. In between these areas, there is also loading and spaces here. Next slide, please. This is the landscape plan. The proposed office building with the parking garage is subject to five sections of landscape menu. The required planning and also schedules are also provided on the site plan, which in conformance with all the required sections, except for 4.2, which is the frontage, I mean, along the Britannia Way and the Capitol Parkway Drive, which along the both frontage. Because of the federal office security requirement, a relief need to be obtained from the 4.2, and also a relief from 4.7 is also requested here. You see here to the north side of this boundary area. The Attorney Compliance Committee has reviewed and recommended approval of the AC to the planning board, which has been included in this detailed site plan. Next slide, please. This is the rendering of the main entrance to the office building. You will see a pedestrian plaza proposed in front of the building, and this plaza will be further connected through sidewalks to the Branch Avenue Metro Station. Next slide, please. This is a perspective view of the proposed building along the Capitol Parkway Drive and Britannia Way. Behind this office building is the parking garage, also two-story. Next slide, please. This is the elevation, shows the top one is the one fronting Capitol Gateway Drive. You see the main entrance in the middle of the building. This building is designed of a contemporary office, you know, building style, with two-story, a total building height of 30 feet. But in the middle of this elevation, you see that the great portion is the mechanical components of the building, which add another 20 feet, so the total building height at the highest point will be 50 feet. The second elevation, which shows the the view from the Britannia Way, you will see the side of the office building and also the parking garage. The office building, basically, is finished with sleek base, and also precast middle, and with a lot of glass building, excuse me, glass window. This building has most of the CIS certification under the LEED NC, which is new construction, and also LEED CI, which is Commercial Interior Rating System. Next slide, please. Yeah, this is the east and the north elevation of the building. There is the entrance, which will be connected to the rear of this building, which will provide access from the parking garage to the building. And then, this is the east side of the elevation, which shows the east elevation of the building and the parking garage. Next slide, please. This is the parking garage elevation, you will see from the north and south perspective. This detailed site plan has been reviewed for conformance with the requirements of MXT zone, ETOD expedited transit-oriented development project requirement, and also DDO and MIO zone, as well as the site design guidelines. The companion case, DDS673, meets the required four findings, as required by section 27239.01B7A, for approval. Detailed discussion provided on page 21 to 22 of the staff report. This detailed site plan is also reviewed for conformance with previously approved conceptual site plan and preliminary plan of subdivision. This site plan meets all the requirements of the woodland, the white-life habitat conservation ordinance, tree canopy ordinance. And no agency opposed to approval of this detailed site plan, but we did receive citizen opposition. As Madam Chair mentioned at the very beginning, the applicant submitted three exhibit. Exhibit number one, basically, two minor revision to the condition, which staff agree with it, very minor. And then exhibit number two and three, basically, additional, uh, number two is outside pedestrian improvement, and number three is the power point show of the entire town center development, which the applicant will be talking about later on. The Urban Design Section recommends approval of DDS673 to allow the reduction of the parking space size to 9 by 19 for all parking spaces, and also recommend approval of detailed site plan 20036 and type 2 tree conservation plan with one condition, as stated on staff report page 35 to 36. And this concludes the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Zhang. Let's see if there are any questions of you at this time. Madam Vice Chair.
How did this time, Madam Chair? Thank you.
Commissioner Washington.
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Warner.
No questions.
Okay, wonderful.
No questions from the others.
Okay, thank you, okay. Okay, so now I'm gonna go to Mr. Horn.
Good morning again, Madam Chairman, members of the planning board for the record, Al Horne, the law offices of Shipley Horne, and Vigo, Maryland. Very pleased to be here this morning, representing the applicant in this case. And Mr. Peter Schwartz is on, and I hope his sound is working for us this morning, because we want to hear a few words from him. Also, from, I think it's Jeff Harris, as mentioned before, unfortunately, Nancy Randall from Wells and Associates has a hearing at the same time at Montgomery County, but Paquilla Jones from Wells and Associates are available. We also have Al Arnold with Stan Tech, who's a civil engineer, as well as our land planner, Francis, civil, so Shipley Horne. We'll be brief, Madam Chairman. We first want to thank Mr. Zhang and the staff and staff, because we agree, the finding, the facts, and the conclusions of law as set forth in both agenda items filed, and it's been previously stated. Applicant Exhibit 1, which I believe you have timely submitted, makes a slight minor revision to condition B1, C1, and 2, in certain words, about the eight-foot sidewalk, to be within the existing public right-of-way. And that's important to state, because, as you know, with these being federal government buildings, they are security requirements that are set forth. And although, and DEPA is well aware of it, because of the CIS1 building, that Mr. Zhang says is under construction, but it's not under construction. It's completed and operated. It's up and operating. And for security reasons, we can't back up closer to the building. They'll have a blast zone, and they'll have the bollards that are up that are common to all security buildings for federal government. So, that's just a clarification with reference to the sidewalks that might have, that's the applicant's exhibit number 1. Applicant Exhibit number 3, I don't- is a response to Commissioner Warner and other commissioners that were looking at the PPIs last week at the preliminary plan of subdivision.
So, wait, can we get this on the screen?
Yeah, if they can put it on the screen, that would be great.
Applicant Exhibit number 3.
That would be good.
Number 3.
Okay, hold on one more. You're muted, you're muted, Mr. Horn. We're trying to put it up here, but unless you have someone on your end who can put it up.
No, we- no, I didn't know we could share screens. That's why we was- we sent that in.
Okay, well, we're working. Hold tight for a sec. Just hold tight for a second, Mr. Horn.
Okay, alright.
This is it. Can you give this to him, so he knows what it looks like?
Mr. Horn, while we're loading it up, can you also just tell us what the contingency fee is? Is that just sort of like a slush fund with leftover in case something exceeds the cost, but if it doesn't, then you could add additional pavement markings or other stuff to extend it even further?
Yes, sir, Commissioner. That's my understanding.
Miss, can you put my camera on?
And so, if you've seen it, even if it's not on the screen, you can see, we went back and looked and see, if it wasn't two bus shelters for one, how far the lane sharing could go out, all the way to off-plate. And that option, that, again, the applicant is more than willing to do. The language and the approval for the preliminary plan, I think, is sufficiently flexible to allow for that to occur, which, you know, whichever the board decides. So, I think that, we just wanted to make sure we came back and addressed the question that was brought up by you, Commissioner Warner, and I believe Commissioner Parsons as well.
Okay, Mr.- Mr. Horn, I just want to double-check something. Is this the exhibit that you're referring to? Can you see this? You need some glasses. You know you need some glasses, Mr. Horn. Okay, this one?
Yes, yes, it is. It is. It says Wells and Associates on there.
Yes, that's this one. Okay, got it. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we have-
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Madam Chair, this is James. I can share my screen.
Okay, please share your screen, thank you. We have, we have a number of exhibits, so we're struggling a little bit here.
Okay.
This is page 5 of 21 in the PDF that we got.
You gave them permission?
Yeah.
I think it's the other attachment that we had.
That's applicant-
It's beneath it, it's-
No, keep going. There you go.
Okay, go back for a second, Mr. Horn.
Not that one here.
More.
Or two more? Is it one more, two more?
With the outside improvements?
Yes, the outside improvements, yes. Back one more.
One more still? Yeah.
Almost, it's not showing quite, right, right there. That's it.
Okay.
So, that would be-
Are you talking about the overhead?
Yes, that would be the- Yes, yeah. That would be the, uh, example of what could occur if it was only one, oops, if there was only one bus shelter, uh, put in place.
And this was applicant exhibit three, see, I had it at.
We lost it, but that was it.
Okay. Okay.
Let me see.
Alright, don't know what happened here. Won't let me do it anymore. If, if someone wants to make me the presenter, I don't know if that would be permissible, but I, I have it open and I could open it up.
Okay, you can open it. Um, you have to unmute me. Okay, Commissioner Donner.
Alright, can, I think I need the permissions to be the presenter in the next slide. Alright. Cool.
There it is.
Yeah, so this is the, the drawing that Mr. Horn was talking about. And then the next page is the actual table that.
Wait a minute, we don't have it. We don't have it on our screen yet.
It's, it's showing on mine.
I'm like, I, I can see it, Madam Chair.
Okay, I see now.
It's on mine, too.
Okay, mine is delayed. I got it now. Thank you.
Commissioner Donner, if you scroll back up, you can maybe refresh the recollection of the, uh, as to what was proposed at the preliminary plan. Yeah, that, that's what we, uh, submitted last week for the preliminary plan. With, with two.
Were you talking about the table?
Whether the, the, the drawing, last week, uh, we, we had two bus stops and just that area in the circle, right there that's in purple, uh, for the bus share, uh, for the bike share. And, um, when, when you all, uh, suggested that perhaps it would be better if we can find a way to extend that, uh, bus share length if we would eliminate one bus stop, bike share length, eliminate one bus stop. That's when we went back and took a look at it, and that's the second exhibit.
So it's comparing pages three and, and page five. I think three was what we saw last week. Five is what you're proposing now, right, Mr. Horn?
Yes, ma'am. Backed up to the board again and, and the, the BPI stuff, you, you found that what we're proposing, uh, was adequate, which was required finding at the time of the preliminary plan. Uh, but as just that we will be extremely flexible. If this was the preference over a bus shelter, then certainly they'll be glad to, to do that. So we wanted to bring that back to your attention. And, um, and I'm not sure if, uh, Commissioner Donner, you still have control of the screen, but applicant exhibit number two is what we wanted to kind of go through really quick. If you haven't been out to the, uh, which is starting right there. Uh, if you haven't been out to the site, uh, we just kind of wanna give you a quick idea of what's going on out there at the town center at Camp Springs. And I don't know, is Mr. Schwartz, are your, is your volume working? Early? I can, we can see you, but I'm not sure we can hear you.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz, okay. Hold on, we're, we're trying to take care of things from our end, too. So it's gotta be both, our end and his end.
Yes, I heard about that. Absolutely, but I want to know when to, so I can schedule it.
Okay, someone else is having an entire conversation.
So, uh, I, I'm not sure if, if Mr. Schwartz's volume doesn't seem to be working. I don't know if this thing.
Okay, we're working. Hold on a second. Mr. Schw, there he is, Peter Schwartz, I see. We just passed it.
Can you hear me, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good, guys. I was on my phone. Sorry about that.
Oh, you're the one having a conversation. Okay.
Yes. So, uh, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, so I would like to take us back to two thousand and two. First of all, greetings to the members of the commission that, uh, and some of who you, I, I know, including the birthday boy, uh, and the members of the staff at the, at Maryland National Capital Park and Planning and Henry Zhang, James Hot, Audrey Checkley, and our team, Arthur, Arthur Horn, and all of the people that have worked so hard to make this happen. This development, which is the second section of the United States Citizenship and Immigration Headquarters, which is the first time Prince George's County has won a lease procurement that covered all jurisdictions. Not only did we win it, but it's a headquarters. And not only is it a headquarters, but it's not a government building which pays zero taxes. We are a tax-paying building and we paid three million dollars, two million dollars in taxes this year alone, just our first year. The building is complete and they are occupying it as we, as we speak. Now, if you look at the diagram in front of you, you'll see there's, uh, three colors. There's green, there's the dark yellow, there's the, the light yellow. All of those represent the ground that, um, I purchased with the company, uh, in two thousand and two, quite a number of years ago. It was all dirt and it was a sand and gravel pit. And in two thousand and two, the metro opened up. The envision was to have a high-density, transitory, you know, the development where there was all that somebody needed and within walking distance. Uh, we, we built, if you can look at it, there's, uh, two apartment buildings right next to the light yellow. There's an apartment building across the street. There's four hundred, uh, townhouses across the street from that. There's two hundred and ninety apartments in the circle. Uh, and so, and then down at the lower left, you'll see another sort of dark yellow. And that's two hundred and, uh, some odd apartments. That represents, that represents over five thousand five hundred people who actually live right there at that metro stop. With the USCIS, that is bringing in four thousand employees that are there, plus fifteen hundred contractors, which is the light, uh, light blu, blue one. And the, uh, the top left where it says BMGS is where the USCIS, uh, is going to be, plus the four thousand metro riders, plus the, the three motels that are out there, plus all the car dealerships. We're going to have five thousand people using the metro, about six thousand people who work there and six thousand people who live there. And they, we are building now Restaurant Row Apollo, which is the brand we started for our apartments, which is the highest, uh, standard in the, the county. Restaurant Row Apollo is fifty thousand feet. And we have leased the first twenty-five thousand to, uh, six restaurants with eleven kitchens. Italian hamburgers, sandwiches, uh, six, five kitchens with, uh, Asian food. Uh, uh, Milk and Honey had to close several of their locations and they're opening up their flagship where, where the, uh, the owner, uh, mother of Milk and Honey is gonna operate it, and she moved into one of our apartments. So, next slide, please.
Commissioner Donner still controlling the, the, uh.
They haven't taken it away from me yet.
Okay. Alright, do you mind scrolling up to the next slide?
So I'm liking, I'm liking, um, the, the Restaurant Row, particularly the new, the new Milk and Honey restaurant.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Luckily, I have one right near me, too.
Yes, and, uh, it is, we, uh, have got three more restaurants in, in, in line, an Indian, a, a chicken, and a Mexican. We are going for something that hasn't been done before to have a destination restaurant, uh, uh, center. That's why it's called Restaurant Row Apollo. And if you take a look at the flavor of the development we have, these are four hundred stacked towns, which is in the far, uh, right, going around Capitol Gateway. Next slide, please. And this is, this is a shot of the four hundred towns as it continues around Capitol Gateway Drive. Next, next slide, please. This is one of the first buildings that was built, Tribeca, which is three hundred units right as you come into the town center at Camp Springs. Next slide, please. This is Metro Place, four hundred units, right across from the stacked towns. Next slide, please. This is, uh, Cart Carmel, right across from the stacked towns and, um, and, uh, Metro Place. Next slide, please. And in Prince George's County, we developed the first brand of apartment buildings called Apollo. And this is Aspire Apollo, four hundred units, which has the highest amenities, highest-grade finishes. And we stand for quality, community, and amenities. Next slide, please. And right next to that is our, a building that we just completed, uh, last year. And we're leasing up. It's another four hundred units. And it is show-stopping to see this is where the, uh, owner's mother of, of Milk and Honey moved in. Next slide, please. This is the front entrance of the USCIS headquarters, which I think is a feather in our, in our cap to have this here. Next slide, please. And this is to show you the enormity of this building. It's one thousand employees per floor. Each floor is four acres. And it's, it's quite something to behold. It's level four security. They have more cameras and wires strung through that building. It probably circled the world a couple of times. Next slide, please. And the, the crown jewel right in the middle, if we remember the first slide, the bright yellow, is Restaurant Row. We divide that as a village with five buildings that all circle the, the middle. And each one of them has, uh, a, their own separate restaurant for two. The main building where the arrow is right now happens to, by coincidence, be, uh, pointing to Milk and Honey, which they, we gave them the premier spot on the second floor overlooking all the other restaurants. So we believe that the second we, building that we win on for this procurement is absolutely, uh, in, uh, a watershed moment for Prince George's County because we have fought, as you know, to stop the redlining of our county and to have GSA pay attention and put us on all of the procurements, which they have started to do. And to win the second one right in a row, right after the first one, means that we are open for business and our metro stops are going to be second to none. And that's why we're pouring all this money into Restaurant Row. The, the a hundred acres that we originally bought is, uh, almost complete, but there's all the car dealerships and there's lots of vacant ground around there. Almost a hundred and fifty acres, including metro. This, that's more ground available for development than anywhere else in the metropolitan area. So to bring this second headquarters of the call center in, right after the first one, I think will be a triumph for us all. And I appreciate all of the developments that you've approved. And, uh, we hope to be, uh, the, the, the proud landlord of the second, uh, federal competitive lease. We are competing with Montgomery County, Fairfax, Arlington, Loudoun, and, um, and, uh, Prince William County. So if we win this one, we, we, we've beaten everybody. So we're looking forward to, um, winning the competition and bringing this to our county. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's nice to see you again and, uh, look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so we can take the screen back, I guess?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. I want to see if anyone has, uh, and, and thank you, Commissioner Donner. I'd like to see if, um, anyone has questions at this time. I, the, the main thing I'd like to say is, hopefully, um, Prince George's County has never got, fully gotten her props, so to speak. And, um, so we're glad we have some, um, real efforts and, um, to win some federal, um, uh, buildings and tenants here in Prince George's County. And I know that the Branch Avenue, um, metro, um, is a huge, um, priority for Prince George's County government, and it has been for many, 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 many years. Um, and we wanted to see some transit-oriented development there. And, and so this looks like, um, you know, we wanna hear from everyone first, but the, the presentation was very good. Um, so let's see if there are any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Um, okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, but thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for that overview. Very impressive, very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you for the recognition. We are proud of it. We are proud to be in Prince George's County. I live in Prince George's County. I'm proud of the county. And I'm, uh, proud to have been, worked with the, the planning commission and the planning staff to, uh, accomplish this, which has been the hardest thing I've ever had to do in my life, so.
Not working with us. That's not the part that's the hardest thing you've ever had to do in your life, I hope. Okay, um, so let me see if there's, I, I'm trying to see if there are any additional questions for you, uh, Mr. Schwartz. Um, Commissioner Donner?
No, thank you. This is a great presentation.
Okay, wonderful. Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions for, for Peter. I just wanna thank him for all that he's been doing in the county over the years and to finally make the realization, uh, of the utilization of our metro stops.
Okay, so there are no questions. Okay, Ms., thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Geraldo.
Okay, so we still have more folks, so, so let me hold tight. Mr. Horn, we're, we're back to you. And then we ha, and then we have someone else signed up, and then we have two, um, opponent's exhibits as well.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chairman, that's it. All of our team are here to answer any questions that you may have. Again, applicant exhibit one was just the minor edits. Uh, two was the presentation, the little PowerPoint that Mr. Schwartz did. And three, uh, was the, uh, BPIS exhibit that, uh, Mr. Donner, uh, ran through for us. Uh, so, uh, those are, uh, that's it for applicant exhibit.
Okay, so you'll get to come back, um, for summation. So we next have Ms. Courtney St. John?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful. Here on?
Yes, so greeting, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name again is Courtney St. John, and I am a resident of the Camp Springs community. I stand in opposition of this project as a matter of principle. While I appreciate the growth of commercial office space and residential properties of the area, I'm in the belief that this growth and development comes at a cost to the current older established community. And I say this as a resident that lives in one of the newer properties of Camp, of the Camp Springs area. As this board continues to review projects and approve or reject projects, I ask that it is always considered how new developments enhance the infrastructure of the current community and enhance community residence. And I do have a question, um, as well. Um, I have a couple of questions. With the second building being built, how will the, how will the developers work with the community to slow the traffic down on Capitol Beltway Drive and on off-way, on off-road?
Ms. St. John, if you could, um, list your questions, because when, when the applicant comes back and, for summation, they, we can answer them all. We'll keep tabs on your questions as well. Okay, so.
Okay.
So now traffic.
I do have, I do, I do have an answer for that.
Okay, can you hold on, Mr. Schwartz? Hold on a second. Okay. Um, so the other thing is, um, um, now, of course, this is, um, this is a detailed site plan, not a preliminary plan. So, but we can address circulation of traffic there, and I think that's what your question pertains to, as opposed to, of the volume of traffic. Okay, so, um, traffic circulation. Okay, um, you can go ahead. Okay.
And then, um, as mentioned with the new immigration building that has been built, um, I know that Mr. Schwartz mentioned that there's gonna be a thousand employees per floor. So how would the uptick in traffic affect the surrounding areas? So how would the uptick in traffic affect the surrounding areas for the older established community on Off Road? And then another concern that was brought up by one of the Camp Springs associations, they said that the council, that our district is eight and not nine. And we were nine before the last redistricting. So is that something that needs to be brought to the forefront? Or, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board as well.
Okay.
I mean, that's all the questions I'd had. I know there was mention of Milk and Honey. I know that the residents in the area were looking for more established places for us to go and eat as well. So Milk and Honey is an option. We are looking for more of healthier food options in Restaurant Row as well. So I don't know if that might include like a Whole Foods or a Harris Teeter or even a Wegmans. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board as well.
Okay.
Did you put the questions in the chat?
No, 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 because we can't, the chat will not, it's not relevant for us. We want it public right here for the hearing. And then, and we've written them down, because the board is very interested in the citizen testimony as well. So we've written them down, and then we're going to give the applicant a chance to answer for you. So, okay. Let me see if the board has any questions of you, Ms. St. John. Madam Vice Chair?
No, no questions, thank you, thank you, Ms. St. John.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dohner?
No question, thank you for coming and sharing your concerns.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I just have one question for Ms. St. John, since we did with the discussion with the bus shelters and the bike lanes. As a resident of the area, what is it that the residents, or at least you, think is more important? Or both?
I think both are important, but we are having, and like I mentioned in the last hearing, we are having severe issues with sidewalks. And so with the uptick in traffic in the area with the new, with this immigration building that's going to hold 1,000 employees per floor, I don't know how that's, how COVID's going to affect that, but if that is the case eventually, how that, in addition to the second building that is going to be built, how the uptick, how the uptick in traffic is going to affect pedestrian safety is a concern of the community, because we already have a lack of sidewalks in the area as well. But to answer your question more in detail, I think that the bike lane is something that is kind of a caveat as well. And the bus, the bus shelter is something that will work as well. But the main thing is just the sidewalks for the community.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
No further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Now, let me say this before I call on the applicant to respond. And Mr. Horn, that could be you, or it could be Mr. Schwartz, or any combination of the two. But I also want to point out that we have a second letter of opposition, and the second letter of opposition raises some of the same concerns. And that is from Ms. Holiday Johnson, which talks about walking, walking in unsafe environments because of the lack of sidewalks. That's a concern of hers. And she also, they also mentioned the wildlife and jobs, same thing, and Ms. St. John mentioned that as well. Now, we, this, jobs are not something that the planning board considers in an application for a detailed site plan or departure from design standards. But given the number of people who will have to be employed there, clearly, there's opportunities there. So I just wanted to point out that we do have a letter from Ms. Holiday Johnson, and in addition to the letter from Ms. St. John, and it raising very similar concerns. Okay, so now, Mr. Horn, do you want to take a stab, or however you want to do it?
Yeah, I'm going to have Mr. Schwartz respond, but I do want to say, to start off, that Ms. St. John is correct. They are in Council District Eight, that changed. It doesn't make any difference with reference to the application process, you know, getting this application, the town center has been going on for a long time. So that's why Mr. Zhang saw it, it previously been in nine, it is now in eight. It doesn't matter with reference to the overall development. We're subject to the same sector plan, and that was previously approved. And, you know, again, if the presentation that we happen to put on shows that the town center that Mr. Schwartz has developed since 2002, it's fairly complete with sidewalks. And, you know, so the sidewalks in the older community that Ms. St. John is referring to has to be outside of the area which we are developing in. And again, that is a concern in not only this older community, but many others. And it does need to be addressed, no question about it. But this is, this is a form only for the detailed site plan of this one particular building, not the overall sector and how the sidewalk issues can be addressed.
But Mr. Horn, let me ask you a question. Are you saying that the sidewalk issue is of, you're conceding that the sidewalk issue is of concern for that community, but it's outside the parameters of your application? There's not a nexus, is that what you're saying?
No, that's true. The town center, the development that Mr. Schwartz has put together in this area, they are fully sidewalks. I mean, they're sidewalks.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure we're clear, because there would be a nexus, a Supreme Court nexus issue, is what you're saying.
Yeah. And so again, so her issue is a genuine one, no question. Not only at Camp Springs, there are areas all over that lack sidewalk. I think Ms. Randall mentioned last week, at the time of the preliminary plan, that they have looked at that previously at the county head. And the money that was put in the CIP to address those issues for sidewalks to be built in this area, and unfortunately, it keeps getting moved back. And their community, the Camp Springs community will tell you that it has been in the CIP for 25 years. And they recognize that it's, something needs to be done, and Mr. Schwartz, they recognize that as well, and they're all supportive. But this application is not the form to be able to address that in, that's our only point. So, you know, with reference to her concern about the traffic area, Mr. Schwartz, I noticed you said you had an answer for that.
Well, wait, hold on a second, Mr. Horn. There were two traffic issues that she raised. One is the traffic circulation, which is a detailed site plan issue. The other is she mentioned 1,000 people per floor, and that that would generate traffic in the neighborhood. That is a preliminary plan issue, but, but still.
Yeah, the circulation is the roadway, the circulation plan and stuff is the one that's existing now. You know, they found, you at the metro site, there's a calculation that's done for the number of individuals that will be coming in via cars, the other means of public transportation buses and all. So the egress in the transportation area is something that has been looked at, and it can be handled. I know Ms. St. John's mentioned before, there was some concern, maybe it was a donor citizen meeting about the traffic circle and stuff that's in that area. But again, you know, that's a determination that's made by State Highway Administration or State Roads or DPWT for county roads. That is something that's beyond the control of the applicant. If they determine that the traffic requires a different traffic pattern, that was looked at at the time of the preliminary plan, and these applications, the CSP and all, these applications have been in the process for years. And the amount of transportation anticipated for the town center at Camp Springs has nearly reached its peak, which they're hoping to be able to accomplish. So again, you know, those are legitimate questions, legitimate concerns that we believe have been addressed.
Okay, so the traffic circulation you've addressed, which is appropriate for a detailed site plan application, which is what this is, the volume of traffic, which is a preliminary plan issue, is more of a preliminary plan issue, which is an application that has already been approved. But you should comment on, the county and nationally, they put higher density near the metro stations, because encouraging public transportation and, and so that is why you have the higher density at New Carrollton and other transit stations. And so that's why you need the buses, and that's why you need the, you know, the development near the metro. So, okay, so we addressed Council District Eight, and then the healthier food options, I hope that's something that you would consider. We want healthier food options everywhere in Prince George's County. And the other thing that she mentioned was jobs. So do you want to turn it over to Mr. Schwartz now? Okay, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chairman. What we have done is there, around the whole Capital Gateway, which is almost two miles long, there are sidewalks, and when there are not sidewalks, we put them in. The majority of the traffic that's going to be coming to these employment centers and to Restaurant Row will be coming from the Beltway, of which their access is right to the Capital Gateway. Or they'll be coming from Branch Avenue from the north, and there's a $60 million overpass that puts them right to the metro or to Capital Gateway. And then there's new accesses from Capital Gateway back to the Beltway and an overpass to Branch Avenue South. All of this, all of this has been connected by sidewalks. I understand and I sympathize with the sidewalks that are outside of this area. And if we can, with our persuasion, work with the, the traffic people over in Deep High, we might be able to try to help with that. But also what we did is we put in a signalization on Capital Gateway, which there was no signalization around the whole road. So when traffic comes in to go to the metro to the left, or to go to USCIS to the right, they go, they have to stop at the stoplight, which we paid for and put in to slow traffic down. So we had estimated that 95 to 100% of the people that will be driving will be using the Capital Gateway as their, as their access and as their egress, because it's the, really the only way to get out of this project. And then as far as the restaurants, we have, the restaurants that I have named and the ones that are coming in the future, we have only taken options that we have tasted, that we deem to be healthy, that are cooked well, and that are recognized. So we have turned down all the Taco Bells, all the Popeyes, even though I love Popeyes. We have decided that we are going to go to a healthier and ethnic going, the whole spectrum, like hook and reel, to go to the whole spectrum, where people are going to get food that is processed and cooked on a healthy basis, but also it's ethnically attractive, which is what will make this such a focal point. In regards to putting in a Trader Joe's or a Whole Foods, this is only a five-acre site. One of those would need something, they would take up the entire site. That's why we have right at Off Road, we have a four to eight-acre site that we are hoping if the next round, to be able to do something along those regards. And there are other sites there that would benefit from that. But our site for Restaurant Row is not big enough to put that much of a venue. We do have a gourmet store that we're in negotiations with that is going to be providing healthy alternatives to takeaway, as well as some prepared food. So we understand that, and we are working to make sure that that is part of our dream, it becomes a reality.
Okay. Mr. Schwartz, let me say this, because some of what, I have to keep our record clear from a legal standpoint. And some of this is, I appreciate the information, and I'm sure our citizens appreciate the information, and it is important to share. I want to stay within the confines, the parameters of a detailed site plan and a departure from design standards. So you've addressed these questions, and, but I'd like to, for you to, I'd like to encourage you, and I believe you and your council will do this, to have continued conversations with the associations and also with the Ms. St. John and Ms. Johnson regarding, clearly, an entity of that size, and all those restaurants that present job opportunities, clearly. But that is a little bit, it's a wonderful thing, but it's somewhat beyond the scope of what we can consider during a detailed site plan. Also, with regard to the sidewalks, apparently there's a sidewalk, we've heard it from Ms. Johnson, and it's also, I mean, from Ms. St. John, but it's also in Ms. Johnson's letter that there is a problem with a lack of sidewalks in the area. But I have our council on, our principal counsel, David Warner, who can explain that we cannot exact that from you based on the whole litany of Supreme Court cases addressing the legal concept of a nexus. So you are not generating that sidewalk issue. That sidewalk issue is pre-existing. And so we cannot exact a condition from you to fix an off-site sidewalk problem. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Madam Chair, David Warner, Principal Counsel. That is true. The authority for the planning board to request off-site improvements, first, started at a different stage of the development, that is at the stage that we evaluate a preliminary plan, and this property hasn't approved, more than one approved preliminary plan for it. When those preliminary plans are reviewed and approved, we can look at off-site improvements that are required by the impacts of the development. That's where you examine nexus. Now we're looking at the site plan, we're looking at the confines of the property, and we can also look on that property if traffic and pedestrian movement is adequately being dealt with through onsite circulation measures, crosswalks, things like that. That's what you can do with this site, and that's what the staff report evaluates.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Again, you do have citizens who are very interested in this, so whatever happens with this vote, I'd like for you to please stay in contact, and we won't disseminate their information publicly on the air. But you have a copy of their letters and have their email addresses, okay? Mr. Horn, anything else to add?
No, ma'am, just to say thank you. And again, you know, speaking on behalf of Mr. Schwartz, I've represented for years. He's very in tune in working with the community and to, as he said, bring things, positive things to Prince George's County. And I guess it was sort of stated, but I don't want it missed. You know, when we come in front of you for applications, and generally, they generally have, you know, somebody who's going into a building or somebody who's agreed to build this, Mr. Schwartz has spent all this money on a speculative basis. He has no idea whether he's going to get GIS to agree to award this site to him at over here. And if he does, great. If he doesn't, we'll be back, because this applicant is only for that. And so, you know, this is, this is a situation where he's extending himself out to try to make this town center what it's planned to be. But I just want to say thank you all, thank you all for that. Appreciate, again, the staff and the board for you all listening to us on this particular application. We ask for your support on both. We ask for your support on both, the DSP and the departure as well.
Thank you. Let's see if there's a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve GDS-673 and DSP-20036 and TCP-2-038-2020, along with the associated condition as outlined in staff's report and is further amended by applicant exhibit number one. And I would also ask that where, and as appropriate, all references to Council Madig District Nine be changed to reflect Council Madig District Number Eight. Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Madam, I mean, Commissioner Washington, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner, Madam Vice Chair? Let me see if there's any discussion, is there any discussion?
I just have a point of clarification, just to ask, so do we need to do anything about the VPIS with option B to insert it into the findings or any of the recommendations?
If, Madam Chair, you don't mind, I don't think so, Mr. Donner, because preliminary plan of subdivision, the condition, the new condition eight from last week gives you, gives the flexibility to be able to achieve that, and we've heard what you said here, and I think your staff has also heard, so when time comes to move forward, I think we have the legal ability to do so.
Great, thanks for the flexibility on that, and thanks to Mr. Schwartz for all this investment and for making it super high quality. This is, this is great.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and also to the citizens who showed up as well, so.
Thank you, and you heard us earlier to please continue communications. Okay, so if that concludes discussion, Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Vote aye.
Okay, so that is for cases five and six, which have been combined, the record is combined for both cases, and the ayes have it, five zero. Now, the next thing is item seven, which is the resolution which needs to be addressed to accompany.
Move approval, Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington.
As revised, consistent with the motion just made, okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion by Madam Vice, I mean, Commissioner Washington, seconded by Madam Vice Chair, to approve the resolution as amended, consistent with applicant exhibit number one. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote aye.
Okay, wonderful, the ayes have it, a five zero. Now, next is item eight.
Move approval, Madam Chair. Also, yeah, also consistent with the amendments in applicant exhibit number one.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote aye.
Okay, wonderful. Let me say this, the next item is item ten.
Thank you.
Thank you, and happy holidays. The next item is going to be item ten, I think we need a five to 10-minute break, health break, and then we'll go to item ten, and then after that, we have some closed session items, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Royal Farms Greenbelt, it is the reconsideration. I'm going to turn to Mr. Bossi to give us an overview of where we are at this point, and want to make sure we have everyone that we need. This is a limited, very, very limited reconsideration. We already voted to grant the reconsideration hearing. Okay, let me check to make sure we have everyone. Mr. Bossi, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. Haller?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, you have people signed up with you, I don't know if, Mr. Guckert? I know, okay, I see you, Mr. Guckert. George Warholt?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see him, I'm gonna keep on going. Ed Scott? I don't see these folks, Mr. Haller. Todd Pounds, I saw you.
I am here, Madam Chair, representing the City of Greenbelt.
Okay, wonderful. Ms. Ruby? City of Greenbelt?
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Wonderful. Ms. Porter? Ms. Porter? There, I see you're, I see you're on, your name there. Okay, so, okay, we'll come back to Ms. Porter. Macy Nelson, I saw you. Can we go back to the screen?
Thank you, I'm here, thank you.
Okay, and Lawrence Green?
Madam Chair, Macy Nelson, he's our witness, did he respond to your query? Because I thought he was on.
I see his name, but I don't hear him, I just see his name on the screen.
All right, he's here, I'll send him a text, but he's here.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Bossi?
Yes, thank you, good morning, Madam Chairwoman and members of the planning board. Just for the record, I am Adam Bossi with the Urban Design Section. As you mentioned, this is item ten, the reconsideration for the planning board's decision on detailed site plan DSP 19045. This is for the Royal Farms in Greenbelt. The approval of this DSP is reflected in the planning board's resolution number 2020-154, which you adopted on November 12th of this year.
Mr. Bossi, I have to stop you for a second, only to say that we have a break time because we have a scheduled closed session item on a separate legal matter. So, and that is at 12:45, so we will have to break, so we'll see how far we get, hopefully we get done, but okay. Mr. Bossi?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, thank you. At your December 3rd hearing, just very quickly, the board did grant this request for reconsideration, and on that date, staff did republish the record from prior hearings on the DSP. We did also publish a memorandum with our recommendation, and do have a short PowerPoint presentation with some info about the DSP that we can refer to only as needed. Very briefly, and as discussed on December 3rd and outlined in our memo, this reconsideration is intended to provide persons of record with additional opportunity to respond to four specific items. Those are the City of Greenbelt's October 12th letter, the applicant's October 13th memorandum, staff's October 22nd memorandum, and the applicant's October 27th memorandum. With this reconsideration, the applicant has requested no changes to the board's decision to approve this DSP, and staff is not recommending any revisions to your decision as reflected in Resolution 202154. With that, Madam Chair, I will conclude our comments, and I do just want to say for reference, that backup document is quite large, and the page numbers are listed for each of those specific items on staff's memorandum.
Thank you.
And I'm here to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn directly to Mr. Haller at this point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I indicated on December 3rd, the sole purpose for the request for reconsideration was to provide opportunity for parties of record to respond to the information that was submitted after the publication of the staff report, and I have nothing new to add and just serve the opportunity or the right to respond to any questions or issues raised by any of the witnesses today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haller. Okay, so this was, this, originally the applicant asked, I mean, the opponents asked for more time to consider those four items. Then Mr. Warner, our principal counsel, read a provision into the record regarding the request for more time, that we did not give them the additional week. Thereafter, Mr. Haller filed a reconsideration because he felt that we should have granted that extra week for other good cause, and so he filed that request for reconsideration. The planning board granted that request, this is the actual reconsideration hearing. Nothing new has been added. I know Mr. Nelson had requested that there be no new testimony from Mr. Guckert. Mr. Haller then indicated he wasn't anticipating any new testimony from Mr. Guckert unless it was triggered by something else that was added, so that's where we were. Okay, I'm going to start with Mr. Pounds, and I'm going in order in which I have people sign up. Mr. Pounds? Hold on, we're trying to unmute you. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to say, Todd Pounds, representing the City of Greenbelt. Madam Chair, we do not have anything new, we stand by our letter of opposition that we had already been filed, that had been referenced by Mr. Haller, and we support the, any additional evidence or arguments that are going to be made by Mr. Macy, by Mr. Nelson.
Okay, in advance, okay, thank you, okay. Ms. Ruby, I, Mr. Pounds, are you speaking for Ms. Ruby and Ms. Porter as well, or do the?
I, they do have any additional testimony either.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can the chair hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Macy Nelson here, I'm counsel for the citizen protestants in this case. My clients are landowners and small business owners in the vicinity. As the board knows, my clients oppose the detailed site plan at issue here. We are responding to the untimely evidence filed by the applicant prior to the last hearing. I have with me here today Larry Green, our traffic engineer, and I, he's been having some technical issues, I think he's on now, but I'll see when I conclude my remarks.
Well, wait, hold on, maybe we can check. Mr. Green, can you hear us? It seems like, it says he's not connected to audio. Okay, well, well, oh, there he is, he's there on twice, okay. Mr. Green? All right. We'll come back. Mr. Nelson, if you wish, we can give him, he has the phone number to call in if that helps you, but you.
I'm back, I'm sorry, it's Larry Green.
Okay, you're back, okay.
I have computer problems.
Okay, okay, all right, so Mr. Nelson, he's on, and you can continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just give a brief overview of my client's objections and responses to the untimely evidence submitted by the applicant. There are serious shortcomings in the new materials, serious lapses in traffic analysis. This case is a detailed site plan, which concerns traffic circulation and ingress and egress at the site. We're not addressing, of course, adequate facilities, we're not looking at the level of services at nearby intersections, but because we are looking at the safety of the ingress and egress, it's important that we analyze not just the net new trips generated by this proposed Royal Farms, but all of the traffic coming in and out of the Royal Farms, including pass-by and new traffic. The first shortcoming of the applicant's, traffic consultant's work is that he only considers, when analyzing the ingress, egress, only considers the new net trip, trips generated by the Royal Farms. That is a serious shortcoming in the analysis. Our consultant, our traffic engineer, Larry Green, will address that detail in further, that fact in further detail. Now, Mr. Green will share with the board his opinion that when one considers all the traffic from this site coming in and out, that it will not be able to exit safely at Capitol Drive. And I would ask, and in response, and part of the new evidence submitted by the applicant's traffic consultant was an alleged gap analysis. And if I could ask staff to bring up the rather large backup material and go to PDF page 226, I'd like to direct the planning board to a particular reference, page 226, please.
Okay. Mr. Bossi, can you do that? I was going to download it?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so, if I have the ability to share my screen.
Well, we can, Mr. Plannigan here will help you share your screen.
And Mr. Nelson, which page were you looking for again? My apologies.
226.
Thank you, sir. It looks like Kenny may have that under control.
Okay.
All right, so this is a, thank you for doing that. This is a report dated October 26th, and if you could scroll down to note three, please, I want to focus on that note. The gap study refers to a gap of four to five seconds or greater. Mr. Green will explain to you that gaps are analyzed in terms of duration. Mr. Green will share with the planning board that a gap, it's generally accepted in the traffic field that a gap of four to five seconds is too short to allow the safe exit onto the road, and the, a shortcoming of this report is that the traffic consultant for the applicant relied on a gap of four to five points, four to five seconds to make the argument without basis that there was, there was the ability for traffic to exit on Capitol Drive. And if Mr. Bossi could go to page 244 of it, please, of the backup, please. And this, what this is, this is the gap analysis, this is the combined east and west gas, gap for the PMP. So I don't know whether the board can see it on its screen, but you can see the column. First column is a gap of one to two seconds, or two to three, rather. The gap, the second column is four to five, third, six to seven, and so on. The applicant's traffic consultant begins his analysis with a gap of four to five, but I urge the board to look at the data for the PMP beginning at six.
Okay, hold on, hold. Wait a minute, Mr. Nelson, hold on, I just want to, okay, six, PMP, okay, got it. This one, okay.
All right. My screen is very small, let me see if I can.
My, ours is, mine is big, I can see it, I don't know better. Okay.
So what this chart tells us is we're looking at the gap duration for the PMP in 15-minute intervals. So if we look at the first interval of six to 6:15 PM, you'll see that there are nine gaps of four to five seconds, and six gaps of six to seven, and one of eight to nine, and so on.
Okay.
And then, as the gaps get longer, you'll see there are no gaps. And then if you go to the second period, 6:15 to 6:29, you'll see there's 14 gaps of 14, correction, of four to five seconds, seven gaps of six to seven, and one gap of eight to nine, and then zero. You go to the third 15-minute segment, 6:30 to 6:44, you see 19 gaps of 14, four to five, three of six to seven, four of eight to nine, one of 10 to 11, then zero. And then for the final 15 minutes, the peak hour, you'll see 14 for four to five, 10 for six to seven, five to eight to nine, and so on. So what the applicant's traffic planner has done is that he's rejected traditional traffic engineering, which requires that you have a minimum gap of six to seven seconds. He has moved the column left, including the gaps of four to five seconds, which under standard traffic engineering analysis is inadequate. He relies on that data to make the argument without basis that the gaps are sufficient. So. So what we have here in this case is a traffic planner who is relying on net traffic, who was underestimated by a factor of four, the amount of ingress and egress coming out of the facility. And then he's relied on, so that fact by itself eviscerates his conclusion, and then he compounds that error by relying on a de minimis gap of four to five seconds, which is contrary to traditional traffic engineering principles.
Okay, let me stop you for a quick second to make sure I'm with you. So we can see the screen, we've seen the traffic group's analysis, we've gone through the 6:00 PM to 6:14 PM, and then the 6:15 to 6:29 PM analysis. And you're, basically you're saying that the gap analysis is faulty, and this pertains to the safety of ingress and egress, which is a site plan issue, not a preliminary plan issue. I just want to make sure I'm with you.
That's exactly right, and the section which I rely is 27-274A-C, subpart little i, and little double i. Yes.
Okay.
All right, but the point also is that the gap analysis on which the applicant's traffic planner relies is the column four to five seconds. And you can see though, and that's contrary to traditional traffic engineering practices. And you'll see that once you get to the minimum standard of six to seven seconds, there's a dramatic drop-off in the number of gaps. And then you compound that because the traffic, applicant's traffic planner has improperly relied on just the net traffic, not the total traffic for ingress and egress. We're not talking about the level of service at the nearby intersection where you don't look at the new traffic. We're looking at the ingress, egress, which requires us to look at all of the traffic. There's a final serious shortcoming. The applicant's traffic planner did a traffic account during COVID era at a site that serves 100% employment uses, and used a factor of 1.04 to bring that traffic count up to pre-COVID or post-COVID levels. We reject that factor where you're trying to make a judgment as the traffic generated by an employment source. Most of the world is working at home now, that a factor of 1.04 is grossly too low for these circumstances. And so that the traffic, the applicant's traffic planner's judgment about the traffic count is the final shortcoming. That's an overview of our points in response to the new untimely information submitted by the applicant. And we have Larry Green here to address those points further. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Let's see if the Board has any questions of you, and then you can put your, or maybe you should put your expert on first. Mr. Green went first, and then we can follow up. Okay. Okay. Mr. Green?
Madam Chair, this is Larry Green.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of points that Mason was making with regards, first with regards to the gap analysis of, I'm using four to five seconds. The gap analysis using four to five seconds would be somewhat appropriate if we're talking about right turn movements from a minor street onto a major street. But in this case, we're talking about gap analysis from, for left turn movements from a minor street to a major street. That requires more, more seconds of gap in traffic, and I'm referring basically to the Highway Capacity Manual. And they recommend gaps for left turns from minor streets of six to seven seconds being appropriate amount of time for vehicles to safely egress a minor street to a major street, especially along roadway such as Maryland 193 with traffic getting up 45 to 50 miles per hour. That was, I wanted to clarify that one point. And again, the amount of traffic that was used in the analysis only utilized the new trips generated by the development. Again, if they included all the traffic, the actual volume would be about four times as much as the amount of traffic used in this analysis. One other point to make is that the pass-by traffic, the applicant used a 30% distribution of traffic turning left into Capital Drive and 30% out of Capital Drive. That would probably be appropriate for new trips, but during, especially during the PMP hour, the predominant traffic flows are eastbound on Maryland 193 of about a two-to-one ratio. So because pass-by trips come from the existing traffic streams, the distribution of traffic going left in and left out, the actual demand is not 30%, it's more like 67% of traffic desiring to turn left in and left out. That would further increase the amount of traffic that would be expected to turn left from Capital Drive to eastbound Maryland 193, thus requiring even more gaps in traffic that would be required. And thus, the number of gaps available are significantly less than what the applicant has shown, and as well as the demand of traffic is significantly more vehicles that would want to do that particular movement. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green, and we've taken copious notes on your analysis. Okay. Let's see if the Board has any questions of you, Mr. Green, or you, Mr. Nelson. Madam Vice Chair. Did I lose Madam Vice Chair? Ms. Washington, Commissioner Washington.
No question.
Commissioner...
No question.
Commissioner Donner.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo.
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. So now, I'm turning, oh, Commissioner, Vice Chair Bailey, I'm sorry, your screen was...
No questions, Madam Chair. No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, now I'm going to turn back to Mr. Haller. Where is he on?
I'm on, Madam Chair. I just had to unmute myself.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
I'm going to ask Mr. Guckert to respond to these. I do want to make two quick notes that were contained in Mr. Guckert's report. I think one of them is, is that gap analysis looked for opportunities where there are gaps in both directions at the same time, and not just gaps in one direction. And so the gap analysis was conservative from that perspective. And I'm going to let him address that. And then also, the, Mr. Guckert's report made it clear that he did not take into account any of the traffic using the traffic signal at Walker Drive and Maryland 193, which provides, as we had indicated in our prior testimony, a substantial opportunity for trips to avoid this intersection at peak times. And again, therefore, the analysis that Mr. Guckert did earlier was conservative. But I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Guckert and let him respond to Mr. Green and Mr. Nelson's comments.
Okay. Mr. Guckert? You're muted. You're still muted. You have to do it on your end. Okay, hold on a second. Mr. Guckert? I can't see his face. You're muted, so don't start talking because we can't hear you. So, all right, Mr. Guckert, you may have to, you may have to, you're unmuted on our side. If you don't, do you have the microphone there? Does it say unmuted? Just shake your head. It says unmuted. Then you may have to call in. I know he's unmuted here, but... Hold on. Wait, did I hear something? Mr. Guckert, was that... There was somebody else. Okay, so the call number is in the same email you received with the login information, Mr. Guckert. Do you need the number, or are you okay?
I just texted it to him.
So both of our transportation people had issues today. Okay. We're getting there.
There's a lot of snow and ice on the roads that may have...
Believe me, I was out there shoveling. I did it last night to make sure I was ready this morning to get here. Can we mute everybody else so that when I hear these sounds, I can... Well, I guess I won't be able to do that. Mute me, mute me. Do you think he's Mr., he's number eight, you think?
I keep, I keep unmuted just in case.
But who was, who was the, Mr. Green, when that caller is he?
Larry Green. He's on, he's on the computer.
Okay.
Yeah, he's on.
Okay.
So he might be, this, this may be his caller. He may be on the phone right now.
Right now?
This is black屏.
You mean Larry?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Is he trying, he's trying to call in?
Yeah, if he's calling in, I'll probably be seeing him.
Let me ask him if he's finished dialing. Mr. Guckert, shake your hand if you've finished dialing in, because we can look for your, for a number. The numbers are anonymous. Mr. Guckert?
He's giving you a thumbs up, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay. So mine, it's too small on my screen. I can't see a thumbs up. Okay. So he's finished dialing?
He's calling.
Okay, go to caller number.
I hear you.
Okay, Mr. Guckert, that's you now. We see you.
All right, very good. Let me start by saying that I think there's significant amount of confusion here, and that indeed, we use total trips when we did our 60 outbound or 60 inbound in the morning and 52 inbound or outbound in the evening. That was based upon 30% of the, of the traffic. You know, the definition of a convenience store is self-evident. It's for convenience. And it's because of that that we assume that 30% of the, of the convenient users would be making a left in or a left out. And as Tom Haller indicated, we did not make any assumption that cars that would be going in or out would use the Walker Drive traffic signal. So all of the trips that we assumed, the 30% in, 30% out, going in and out of Capital Drive equate to 60 in the morning and 52 in the evening. That's the total number of trips, not the pass-by trips. I think they're confused because, Mr. Nelson is confused because he might have been looking at a different chart or a different table. But we use the appropriate number of trips in and out based upon our projection that 30% would find it convenient to be making a left turn in or left turn out. So we believe we did the appropriate analysis. Additionally, the median is wide enough that cars that may be exiting could pull out into the median without having to pass all the way through. And it's for that reason that we use the four to five second gap analysis, because they'd be able to pass halfway across, which is the way most normal people would drive if there's not a sufficient gap, and pull into the median, wait for the eastbound lane to clear.
Would the median, would the median allow for one car in the median then?
Yes.
Okay.
And technically, it could be more, but for safety's sake, I'll say one.
Safely, safely.
So that's, that's my response to Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Haller, is that it for you? Mr. Haller? Okay.
If we could hold on for one second. Oh, Mr. Guckert, could you please respond to the, to the issue raised about the trips, the date the trips were counted based on the COVID restrictions?
Well, indeed, the, the planning commission has issued guidelines that the planning board approved that says any, any traffic counts that are being done during COVID would be, would be factored by 4%. The, the other issue is that the, the traffic counts that we conducted were right in line with traffic counts that were conducted about 10 years ago at Walker Drive. So there really has not been much of a change on, in this office park, pre-COVID or post-COVID.
And, and from the standpoint of calculating or counting trips that are going east and west on 193, there was a question raised about the fact that a lot of, this is, the Capitol Office Park itself is, is an office park, and people may not be working in their office because of COVID, but the, but the, but the trips along Maryland 193, east and westbound, are not exclusively going to an office park. Isn't that correct?
That, that's correct. And again, the trips in and out of the office park today in 2020 are not much different than they were 10 years ago.
So based, based upon your analysis, you indicate that you did evaluate total trips going to the proposed development in calculating the number of trips utilizing, returning movements utilizing Capital Drive, 193 intersection, and that the gap you used is more than sufficient to go halfway across the road as opposed to all the way across the road. Is that, is that what you're indicating?
That's correct.
All right, I don't have anything else, Madam Chair.
Okay. Let me see if the Board has any questions of either of the transportation experts. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
All right. Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Commissioner Haller? I mean, oh, my God.
I wish I was.
No, and we, nothing personal, but we don't. We, we don't. I'm looking at the screen. We don't. Commissioner Geraldo?
Are we, Thomas, are we trading places?
No, we're not having a hat.
No, I need a hat.
I have no questions.
Okay, let's focus.
Yeah, you do.
Okay. Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
No questions. Okay.
No questions.
Okay. Now, I'm going to, we're going to try to do this succinctly. Okay, I'm going to go with Mr. Green if you have anything else to add one time, and then Mr. Guckert, an applicant, if you have anything to close out with, and then we'll close that closing out.
I just wanted to add that we did a calculation of the number of trips, total trips that would be generated by the site, and we came up with about 535 trips during the PMP hour that the site would generate. And if we do, based upon the distribution of traffic during the PMP hour, and again, we, we calculated it's about a two-to-one ratio, that would be 67% turning left in and 67% turning left out. That would yield about a hun, of about 180 trips turning left out of this, out of Capital Drive to eastbound Maryland 193. So again, we feel like the number of trips that were utilized are, have been underestimated.
Okay, so let me make sure I got you. You feel like there are 100, your analysis shows that there's 535 trips in the PMP hour. 67% turning left in and left out, which means, translates to 187 trips, which far exceeds the number that is...
About a...
No? No?
Yeah, about 180 trips.
Okay, 180, okay. Trips, okay. All right. Mr. Haller, Mr. Guckert?
Yeah, I hear this is what... Yeah, I do, this is Wes Gucker. Larry Green and I have known each other for many years, and I'd like to remember. But in this particular case, the, the staff agrees and agreed with the trip generation rates that we used. We followed the super convenience market trip rates that are the, in the Planning Commission guidelines, and that's where we came our, where we came up with our trips. I'm not sure where Larry came up with his, but we, we used Planning Commission guidelines that they approved the, the number of trips that we had used and projected for this store.
Okay. I'm going to give, okay, thank you. Mr. Nelson, succinctly, do you have anything else to add? But you're muted, you're muted. You have him unmuted here?
I'm unmuted, sorry. I would direct the board to page 223 of the backup where the traffic group addresses the net trip issue, which I think is consistent with what Mr. Green has just said. Page 223.
223, okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Haller, you get to close out.
I have nothing further to add. I, obviously, I, I think Mr. Gucker, we know Mr. Gucker, he's been in front of this planning board for many years, and, and he is, he is one of the premier experts in the, in the field, and I, I trust his analysis, particularly since it's been affirmed by the county staff. Thank you.
May I, Madam Chair, make one more, one statement about the last comment that Mason Nelson made on page 223?
Okay.
He's, he's, again, mixing apples and oranges. The rural farm net trips, it's net trips that are used when looking at the trip cap. That was only used to examine the trip cap, not to be used in the analysis. So I don't, I want to make sure you're not confused or the planning board's not confused. That particular exhibit was used for the trip cap analysis to show that there were trips left in the preliminary plan. That's it.
Okay. Let me see, does the board have any questions of anyone? Mr., Principal Counsel, Mr. Warner, do you have anything to add? You're muted.
No, Madam Chair, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bossi, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, does the, and, and again, does any board member have any questions of anyone? I see no hands going up. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff as outlined in staff's report, in addition to the amended findings as outlined in staff's memo dated October 22nd, and approve DSP-19045 and TCP-2-1170501, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report, and is further amended by staff's memo dated October 22nd, 2020. In addition to that, staff's new condition seven, as outlined in the October 22nd memo, shall be revised as read into the record by Mr. Haller, the applicant, in addition to an applicant proffered condition related to a repair station for bicycles. And I would ask staff to ensure that the resolution reflects the appropriate wording to accommodate that. In addition to the resolution incorporating the city of Greenbelt's conditions, and this would be based on their memo dated October 12th, conditions 1, 3, 4, 5, 7, 9, and 11. And I would just note that some of Greenbelt's conditions have already been incorporated by staff into their revised conditions.
That concludes your motion?
It does.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, wait a minute. I think, I think Madam Vice Chair seconded it. Is there a discussion? Under discussion, I would like to add as a, as a finding that we have heard and considered the, the additional presentation by Mr. Nelson and Mr. Green and Mr. Gucker in this matter as well.
I, I concur with that, Madam Chair.
Okay. And does the seconded agree with that?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, so, all right, so I don't, is there any additional discussion? Madam, Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Vote aye.
The ayes have it 5-0. Thank you very much. Let me say this, because we're about, we're about to go into closed session and, and for, for two items. But this is our last hearing for December for the, for the year 2020, and what a year it has been. If ever there was a time to thank everyone for your flexibility and cooperation and support as we've tried to navigate through this very, very challenging year to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion, this is the time. It has been an extremely challenging year. And so we've had 32 planning board sessions since March. So I, I just want to say thank you to everyone for your flexibility, your cooperation, and your support. I am going to close with, we remain very, very thankful for our blessings, even in these challenging times, because if you look in your plus column, they will, the blessings will far outweigh anything and everything in your challenge column. So we remain thankful for our blessings and ask that you take every effort to be kind to one another, to stay safe, to look out for each other, to stay strong, to stay resilient, and get your vaccine when it's, when we're allowed, and to remain ever, ever hopeful as we strive to get through these challenging times together. I wish everyone, whatever it is that you celebrate, if you celebrate at all, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and all the best to you and yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Now...
Thank you.
I gotta find my notes here. Pursuant to section, gotta go to, pursuant to section 3, that's 305, B3 and B7, we need a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of consultation with legal counsel for advice relating to acquisition of real property and to discuss pending litigation. Is there a motion?
I move, Madam Chair.
Gucker?
We have a motion from Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo? What did I do wrong?
I vote aye.
It was seconded, it was, hold on, they're checking. Commissioner Washington made the motion, Vice Chair Bailey seconded it. Okay. I will also take this opportunity before we close out the closed open session, although we'll come back to ratify, but as we close out our open session to publicly again say happy birthday to Commissioner Geraldo, and now that he's put it out there, we can say happy big 7-0. We were gonna let you be first.
Oh, you got it wrong, Madam Chair, it wasn't 17.
Oh, okay, okay.
17.
Okay, something wrong with my math, okay. All right, so we will, and then also, I wanted to take a moment to thank Calista Black, and I also want to take a moment to thank, we really wanted to, to really wish you a happy birthday, and I wanted to take a moment to thank our visual media expert, Ryan Cron, for helping to put our birthday surprise together for you, so...
That was, that was, that was beautiful. Can I have a copy of that?
We'll get it for you. But also, while we're here, we want to thank our planning department, I want to thank our chairman's office, I want to thank our planning board administrator, our planning director, Kenny Flanagan, who's been here day, week in and week out running these power points, trying to decipher what everybody's saying to him and keep up with it. Ryan Cron, who's done a fabulous job. James Hunt, who's there, who's holding up the fort for development review. Anika, Anika, Anika Brown Jackson, who's been helping as well. Calista, who's helped, oh my goodness, Natasha in our office, Calista Black, everybody who's worked so very hard. I know I'm messing up, but just understand, this is an all-encompassing thank you to everyone for getting us through 2020, okay? Bridges County Planning Board is back in session. No, we need a motion to come out of closed session. We need a motion to come out of closed session.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Okay, you know what birthday, boy, we're gonna give it to you. Motion by Commissioner Geraldo, seconded by Commissioner Washington. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
I vote aye.
The ayes have it 4-0. Okay, so we're now back in open session. We have a legislative item in front of us now, and the legislative item pertains to General Assembly legislative priorities. It's a letter to Senator Benson and to Delegate Barron as the county leaders in Annapolis to provide clarification on what is needed in terms of the affidavits in order for the council to hear the countywide MAP amendment. So you have the letter in front of you. Madam Planning Director, is there anything you needed to add to that? Or Ms. Borden, Ms. Borden, you wanted to say something too, I know.
Just that we have reviewed this, and we do expect that the language will change somewhat in order to put it into legislative form, but the, but the basic structure is there, and we are recommending that you approve the letter and approve us working with the council to get the language just right, and to help them lobby our delegation to make this happen so that we can move forward with countywide MAP amendment.
And it's the county council, the county executive, and the planning board if, in, that will be working in tandem on this. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Borden. Ms. Checkley, anything to add?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. So we have everything in front of us, it's been, our deputy general counsel has elaborated. Is there a motion to approve?
We'll approve them, Madam Chair.
Is there...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Oh, 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 yes.
Okay. Everybody, wait a minute. So the ayes have it 4-0. Mr. Hunt, are you still on? Mr. Hunt, Mr. Hunt? I'm gonna ask myself the dead-gone question. Ms. Hewlett, is there any additional business to come before the planning board today? No.
Wait, wait, did we...
I didn't, because we did it here. We did an open session. We, there was no position. Okay. So, so seeing no additional business to come before the planning board today, I declare planning board adjourned. Everyone have a safe holiday, stay safe, many blessings. Thank you to everybody. Happy birthday to Commissioner Geraldo, and we will see you come January when 2020 is no más, no más.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tiral.